Good evening. My name is Mark Elidge, President of the Board of Education. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:03. And I'd like to have Sharon lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, dearly.
Thank you. Item 3B, which is the Agenda, the Examination and Approval Agenda. I'd like to have a motion and a second that the Agenda of August 11th, 2020 be approved as submitted.
No more.
Any discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand.
All are in favor and not opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. 3C, the Approval of the Consent Agenda. So we'll have, the Consent Agenda includes information provided in your packet, which is the approval of the minutes of July 7th as submitted, the acceptance of the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education, the acceptance of recommendation from the Committee on Preschool Special Education, the acceptance of recommendation from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes Budget Transfers, June 1st through June 30th, request to approve the Empire State Weekly's RFP for printing, the request to approve Lathan Equipment RFP, and the approval of the request to dispose of unservable textbooks. We have a motion and a second.
No more.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
All are in favor and not opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. The next 3D, which is the Treasury Report, the motion that the Treasury Report, including the Cash Report, General Fund Cash Report, the General Fund Revenue Status Report, the General Fund Budget Status Report, the School Lunch Fund Cash Report, and School Lunch Fund Revenue and Expense Budget Report for the months ending April 30th, 2020, May 31st, 2020, and June 30th, 2020, be approved. We have a motion and a second.
No more.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
All are in favor and not opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. So we get into Section 4, which is the Superintendent's Report. And I'll turn it over to Tom, excuse me, to prevent, to begin the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mark. We have quite a few things to get through this evening, a Superintendent's Report. I do have some student and staff honors. We do have an update to the upcoming school year 2020-2021 school calendar. We have Mr. Argento here for our School Lunch Report, and Dan Driffo will be also giving us a bus inspection report. And then Dr. Driffo will be giving us the analysis of fund balance and tax rates for the 2020-2021 school year. Mr. Pfeifer will be giving us a brief update on the Leadership Summit Review. It was a little bit different this summer, thanks to COVID. And then I have an update on reopening of schools, share some information. So we'll start with some positive news, which we're all looking for in this day and age. And I would like to just say recognition and congratulations to our Penfield High School on being named a New York State Department of Education Recognition School for the 2018-19 school year. They're always a little behind because they look at a lot of data. And the award celebrates schools that have high academic achievement, growth, and graduation rates, and acknowledges that PHS is leading New York State toward the accomplishment of educational excellence and student performance. So congratulations, we've got this, this is a photo of the award, and we're sending it over to the high school. So happy for them. Now I'll turn a little bit to our school calendar update. And on your screen, you can see sort of a text of the calendar dates, the important dates. The big issue that we've shared with our community a couple of times now via email is that we are looking to push the first day of school for students back in order to allow more time for our staff and our faculty to prepare for teaching and learning in the year of COVID. So we want to make sure that our teachers have plenty of time to prepare lessons that will be online, and as well for our custodians and buildings and grounds to make sure that the school can be ready to open and follow all mandated guidance that we'll talk a little bit about later tonight. So the changes in this calendar, because it's tough to see changes here, is the first would be, the very first day of school would be Thursday, September 10th. And because we're working in a hybrid system, the first day of school for Cohort A would be September 10th, and the first day of school for Cohort B would be September 11th. But all those kids in Cohort B shouldn't get excited that their first day is actually Friday, the 11th, because their first online day of instruction will be September 10th. And for Cohort A, their first day of online instruction will be Friday, the 11th. Well, if the Board approves these calendar changes, we will send that out and make sure parents and students are well aware of what day they're coming to school for their first real day with real teachers in their day online, still with real teachers, but through Microsoft Teams. There is no, in order to push the calendar back for a later start day, as all schools in New York State, we have to meet the 180-day threshold set forth by the state. So with every, with every action, there's a, there is a reaction. So we needed to cancel the January Conference Day. So students will go to school in January, and teachers will report in January, where we used to have a conference day where teachers were coming to school, but students were home. So there'll be no conference day in January. And the other change we made is our K-5 conference days, which are known in this district for many, many years as our parent-teacher conference days. And so the first change is our, our first parent conference day is typically in November. We pushed that to December to give teachers this year more time to work with their students before they have to put together a report card for two reasons. We're starting late, and we know that in the spring it was not ideal, and we want to make sure our teachers have plenty of time and aren't rushed to provide scores for students at the K-5 level. And so we pushed our conference day into December. And conference days for K-5 typically always fall on a Friday. Because we're working in a hybrid system, talking to teachers and principals, we made the decision that we're going to move the conference days to Wednesdays, which therefore won't impact the learning of Cohort A and Cohort B. So if you look here on this calendar, there is a conference day where K-5 doesn't go to school on December 9th, and K-5 doesn't go to school on March 3rd. But because those are both Wednesdays, kids typically aren't going to school on Wednesday anyway. It will impact our students with disabilities in the 1211 and 1213 classes at K-5, because they go, they will be able to go to school five days a week due to those class sizes and the needs of those students. So that's a change. And then the last one is really, as a parent, the saddest one to report, but it's probably just for this year, which is in order to get those days in the beginning of the school year, we had to use all of our emergency closing days. So Penfield, like many districts around us, will not have any emergency closing days, also known as snow days. So if we do get a snow day, which is rare in Penfield, it will be a virtual school day. And staff and students will still log in and be able to use it as a day of attendance and get work done, but it will be virtually. And I, I'll make the promise that will probably build a little time in to go sledding, but it will be a virtual, virtual day for students. Those are my updates on this calendar. Are there any questions from the Board before I move on? Later in this meeting, the Board, I believe, has to vote to adopt this calendar.
Anyone on the Board have a question here? I see Catherine, I see your hand up.
Tom, how will you announce a snow day? Because of, you know, like if it were to fall on a Wednesday, it's a virtual learning day, at least. And we're talking the first semester, right?
We're talking all year.
All year for that, okay. All right, well then, forget the Wednesday thing, just how would you do that? Would you do an announcement in the same manner as you already are doing it? And then refer everybody to online learning, how would that work?
Yeah, so we will, once this calendar is approved by the Board, at some point in the next week, we will share specifically with the community what the calendar looks like and additional information on what will happen for a snow day. I'll share that now in August, which means none of us will remember come December. So as the winter comes in, I always send an email to families explaining how snow days are determined, because every year we get questions on that. And that email will be a little different, because I'll reminding people that although it may be called a snow day, we will be learning virtually, and they should log on to their Teams account for the classes they would have had that day. And so it will run through Teams, and they would just, all students would have to check in on Teams via, to check in on the classes they would have had that day. At the 6th through 12th level, at the elementary level, if it's the A Corps, they, both groups would be checking in via Teams, either for synchronous learning or asynchronous learning based on the structure of that day. It'll be different at each building level, because each building's, the calendar is the same for all households on when they go to school, but what it looks like in a kindergarten class is obviously going to look different than a 12th grade class. But if they log on to Teams, they should be all set. And we'll, as we get closer to emergency snow days, we will share that again with families and students, so they know what to do.
Okay, thank you.
It really takes the fun out of calling a snow day, but, but I think this is a, this is the year of COVID. We're doing things differently to make sure that we can build the time in for our staff, our faculty, and our, and our school district to be prepared for learning in the system that we have created.
Any other questions? Lisa?
Tom, will the different schools be creating like the A-B calendars? Because they're going to look slightly different, like a, like a day calendar, does that make sense?
Yeah, so we're working on that after, we're sort of holding until the Board approves a calendar, but, but each school will be able to share out what day is an A day and what's day is a B day for those different cohorts.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the Board?
No.
All right. All right, that's that, thank you, Tom, and that's, I think we're set for that.
Okay.
That topic.
So now I get to turn it over to Mr. Joey Argento to give us our School Lunch Report. Joe?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Hello, everybody.
Hi.
All right. So this is a, this is a story that has two parts to it. And Tom, I'm going to steal your line, because you all heard of this COVID thing, right? Well, that's, that's what happened to us. And we finished the, the school year with 231,0841 meals. It was our plan to hopefully serve 295,000. But our season was shortened, so. Tom, you can go to the next slide. Prior to the pandemic hitting, we were really doing well, far exceeding our, our budgeted average daily participation of 1685. We were at over 1,700, which you see 1,721 the actual. And we were, we were doing well, we're getting a lot of participation. And as you've probably heard me say in the past, it's the key to the success of our program. Breakfast was, we were getting a little slighter participation prior to the pandemic, but it wasn't that far off from what we had budgeted. So, you know, there would probably, we might have, might have, actually might have made that goal by the end of the year. But, but then post the pandemic, the breakfast ADP goes up, but lunch ADP actually falls off, because we ended up averaging 570 kids a day with the meals that we were, we were handing out. So when you total that all up, we finished at 1,332 for a lunch ADP, which, you know, is gonna, that's what ends up hurting us in the end, is the participation. But the breakfast ADP shoots up, but the pandemic kind of forced that, because as families came to get their meals, they got breakfast and they got lunch as a, as a combined thing. So there was more of a, instead of offer versus serve, it was just serve, they got it. So that did help us. So Tom will go to the next slide. But as I just mentioned, you know, ultimately, this, this budget falls short on revenue just due to the lack of participation. We also lose out by not having the kids in the building, our snack sales and all of our other sales. We lost all that revenue. We did end up getting more aid revenue, because they increased the rate, you know, that reimbursement, because this was technically considered emergency feeding. So the federal government kicked in a little more money in aid. So we did receive, you know, extra money in that, in that regard. But then, you know, we try and always take advantage of our commodity usage, and that was cut short because of the lack of participation as well. There was also a little bit of a distribution issue at the beginning of the school year, so we did lose out on some of that usage earlier in the year, but that's been fixed now as well. And as you know, we ended up using a lot of labor, because we, and thankfully, our, and I know our staff appreciated, they were paid, all the food service staff was paid during the time they were off. So labor did chew into this as well. Next budget, or next slide. So what you see here is total for that time of the pandemic, we ended up serving 34,210 meals, that's breakfast and lunch on each side. And I'm happy to say that, you know, we used just our management staff, myself, and my assistant Shelley, who can be seen here putting the breakfast together. And we tried as best as we could to stick to our planned menu, offering everything that, you know, we could, we could do to make it seem normal for the families that came and got our food. So for the next slide, those Ramon sticks there, there's pancakes on the table.
Joe, I just have to point out that in those bags that say cookie, I learned the hard way that they're bagels. All right, so those aren't actually cookies, they're bagels.
Yep.
You guys did an incredible job, I will now switch this.
Here, you know, some of the commodity usage, I was cooking sloppy joes. And that's 570 servings of sloppy joe, that's 180 pounds of raw ground beef that I turned into sloppy joe. And talking about, you know, Tom, you got the cookie bag there that had, you know, didn't have cookies in it. Well, those are bread racks, and we used anything that we could to adapt our system. And my team really, we brainstormed this for a day or two, and we came up with some pretty creative ways to get the job done. And, but that is raw product turned into over 500 meals. And we'll go to the next slide. Like I said, we stick, we tried to stick with our menu, and we found containers to pack everything up. Our hot dogs, you know, they got the bun, they got the beans, they got everything together. You know, we used bread racks to stack everything up, shrunk wrap them, stuck them in the freezer. Here's on Distribution Day, out on the table, when families came, meals were boxed up for them. And nutritional information was still included. And I, I put that slide in here just so that, you know, folks watching this will know that when we go into our feeding this year, some of this is going to look similar. And, you know, we stayed the course with our commitment to kids with allergies and other dietetic needs, and gave them all the cooking instructions, and we're going to do the same thing in September. Go to the next slide. And we got a lot of thank yous from the community. As they poured in, they were like, it was like a rally cry for us. We had a lot of help with the admin staff, I have to thank them. I try not to leave anyone out when I say thank yous, but Pete Chambo was our chief mop guy and bottle washer. He was there every day with us. And everyone that helped hand out meals, the community gave us a lot of feedback. That helped out on a lot of days, because I can tell you, it was backbreaking work for, you know, the five or six people that were packing meals and getting it ready, and then the rest of us that stood out there handing it out. You know, it was, it was a lot of work. And I also want to recognize the work that was done prior to that. You know, my staff that was there up, up to Friday 13th, they were busting their butts too. And our ADP shows that work, and I don't want to forget them too, because a lot of them that had to stay home wanted to come in and help us. But we kept it small, we had to keep the crew small, just because we couldn't take any chances of anyone getting sick. But, so anyway, moving forward, we're in, just trying to anticipate the best we can, an idea of what we're going to get. I'm thinking 115,000 meals, and ADP has 672 kids. You know, I don't, it worries me, but I think it's realistic right now. Our cooperative bids, after going through them, didn't see much of an uptick in food. I thought we were going to, but I really didn't see much of an uptick, just a few percent. We're going to forecast a little bit of decrease in labor. I don't know if all the staff are going to come in, if we have an issue. They're going to be home this year and not being paid, but we still have to make room for that minimum wage increase. I don't, that's always in there every year. The benefits in this budget are going to remain same, you know, to the, to the budget. Material and supplies, this is our paper goods and all of our other needs, they're going to slightly decrease, and that's based on participation mainly. And this year in the budget, we're not going to be purchasing any, any new equipment for the capital project. And I see a reduction in the amount of repairs too. We'll go to the next slide. Revenue side, this decrease is 30% budget to budget. Again, 115,000 lunches. I'm estimating a little higher, you know, 82,500 for breakfast. It's just, it's not far off from our actual from last year, but the families that do come in to get meals, they're going to be the same thing, they'll be getting breakfast and lunch. So we hope to drive, well, drive some revenue at breakfast. The revenues in aids are built off of the actuals that we received last year with the 10 cent increase. But other sales this year, we're not going to be opening up, selling any snacks. The recommendations and guidelines, you know, for vending, our vending machines are going to be shut down, and they're actually going to be removed. And we're not going to have a lot of them snack sales, because we just logistically see it being a problem with gathering, you know, it's a gathering area. So if we can introduce some snacks later on, we will, but this is definitely going to put a crimp on revenue. And the catering sales are down about 75%, because we don't see any building activities that'll be taking place, and those do get built through us most of the time. Next budget. So child nutrition provisions going into this year. Last year, there was a hold on doing anything. However, this year, the Secretary of Agriculture did lift that hold, and they are going to carry out the goal of, you know, the final goal, which really was a target on sodium. And those reductions were, you know, to cut it in half over 10 years. So those, those reductions are going to remain in place. We are compliant as it is now. The whole grain requirement is going to end up staying in place, along with our professional development standards. We were on tap for an audit with the child nutrition last year, and that got put on hold. They were supposed to come on March 19th and do the onsite. Well, that did not happen. But they planned to try and get to us at some point in time next year, in the, in the next school year. They haven't told us yet what's going on, but I'll update you on that when, when that happens. Going to be an increase in aid, a reduced meals again this year, 25 cents. And we'll be operating under any SED meal waivers if applicable. Right now, we're going to go into the school year like a normal school year, and lunches will be free, reduced, and full paid. And we will be functioning under the normal guidelines. If we switch to emergency feedings, we will apply for any waivers that we need, you know, to, to make that happen. But right now, all the waivers that we were operating under have expired, and, but that's because we're going back to normal, or somewhat normal. Next slide. So we are going to propose a 10 cent increase this year, raising lunch to $2.90 and raising breakfast to $1.60. The reduced families will still pay zero, and we will be reimbursed a quarter, you know, a quarter more in those categories. Milk stays the same as well. The history here of our, is what puts us here with the rest of the field. Locally here, we're like not the cheapest, but we're pretty, pretty much in the middle, which is where historically we've always remained. We're still a real good deal at breakfast, and, you know, that's, that's not a problem. Next slide. Nope, I think you skipped one. No. There was a, nope, I guess not. So any questions that I can answer?
I'm sorry, Mark, Joey, before you answer the question, could I just clarify something for the community?
Sure.
Since we're on the hybrid model, and many students will only be coming into school two days, will students still be able to get a free reduced lunch if they aren't in school those days? For the other three days of the week, will they still be able to somehow get a meal?
Yes, they will. We're going to have a pickup site at all of our buildings. Scribners will be at Bay Trail, and we are going to put out a, a video that will describe and show in detail where those locations are and the hours that you can come and get them. Similar to our emergency feeding, we will have about a two-hour window, just working out those final details around the buses, so that families can come to a door. They won't be able to come to a building, but they'll be able to come to a door where I will have a staff member there, and they can, just, we'll disperse those meals.
Great, thanks, Joey.
Thank you. Okay. Board, any, any questions for Joey? Okay. Just making sure I don't see, miss any hands here. And then I think, Tom, that was the question I had, so thank you, Joey, for explaining that, how that's going to work this year as well. So it was, you know, it was one of the many things that was a complete change that the district had to put together in a very short order.
Yes.
You know, just amazing, the kind of work that people do when they really have to do it. They come together, and I think that just speaks volumes to the culture of this district. So thank you, Joey, for what you've done.
Thank you, you're all welcome. Thank you, Jim. Your hard work moving forward.
Just before we move on to the bus report, I just wanted to echo what Mark mentioned, just on behalf of the district. I think Joey underplays some of the compliments that his team received coming in to, to pick up food, because, you know, it wasn't an emergency waiver, which meant it wasn't just families that needed the food for free and reduced economic reasons. It was also families looking for some normalcy for their children. So being able to come through and get those little pancakes in a bag that I can't get enough for, enough of, you know, those are the pieces that really, really goes a long way. And Joey tried, and I'll forget people, but I do, I'll give a shout out to Jim Cleveland, a member of B&amp;G, who became our delivery person and delivered meals all over Penfield for families that weren't able to, to get in to pick up themselves. And so it really is that team effort piece, but food service is one of those groups of unsung heroes in all districts, including Penfield. So just with, because Joey's here and we got him on TV, just a huge thank you to you, and especially your staff that really stepped up in a, in a tough time and made something really cool out of, out of a not-so-great situation. So thanks, Joey.
You're all welcome.
Yes, thank you.
And I'll, I'll turn it over now to Dr. Driffo, who's going to give us the bus inspection report.
Thanks, Dr. Putnam. And also just a big kudos to Mr. Argento for not only the work he did in the spring, but all the work that he and his team have been assembling this summer, preparing for the reopening with all the guidelines that we have to adhere to. It's been a big effort behind the scenes. So really, just a public thank you for you, Joey. Support of education, a couple of things for you this evening. The first is something that we like to annually keep you apprised of regarding the Department of Transportation and our bus fleet and how we're doing in terms of safety and inspections. The buses undergo rigorous testing twice a year as opposed to personal vehicles that are subject to just the one test per year. The state of New York considers it commendable to have a passing rate over ninety percent. And this year, our folks over in the bus garage were able to have a passing rate of ninety-five, ninety-four and a half percent. So historically where they've been, they've always done a great job. So just wanted to keep you apprised of that and in tune with the really good work that they're doing over there to keep our buses running tip-top and keep our kids as safe as possible. So a discussion about fund balance for year-end nineteen-twenty and then setting the tax rates for the fall twenty, twenty-twenty-one tax year collection. So no changes to report regarding year-end fund balance from the prior authorization that the board gave back in their June meeting, but we'll just run through as kind of a reminder of where we stand. This is subject to the external audit which is going on right now, which should be completed in another month or so, but we don't anticipate any changes. So the unappropriated fund balance for last year was a little over four million dollars. That's the four percent legal statute that we're allowed to carry. It's four percent of the next year's budget. So that four million dollars is four percent of a hundred million dollar budget. That represents the only amount of unrestricted funds that a school district can carry, essentially our emergency savings plan. The appropriated fund balance amount is the amount that we carry forward into the next fiscal year to reduce the tax. Then we add in the entire year's revenues, everything that we received, any carryover encumbrances from the eighteen-nineteen year, things that weren't delivered on time, so we had to pay them the next fiscal year. And then appropriated reserve usage for bus purchases and insurance liability costs related to bus lift that we had to repair last year. And then we subtract out all the expenditures that the school district incurred throughout the year to get us to where we ended at year-end. So we transferred a million dollars to the capital project work that we have going on, the twenty-eighteen additions project and the twenty-nineteen roofs tracks project that was planned. We allocated a little over seven hundred thousand dollars to the newly established TRS reserve as a risk mitigation effort for that pension system. We've allocated two-point-eight million dollars to the ERS reserve. That's the New York State Local and Retirement System Reserve. We allocated six-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars to the unemployment insurance reserve. We allocated just shy of five million dollars to the capital reserve for buildings. So the board should know that our two capital reserves for buildings, one of which was established in twenty-fourteen and the other was established in twenty-sixteen, are now fully funded according to the community's provisions of those reserves. So the board will want to consider in the next year or so establishing a new capital reserve as we continue the capital project planning that our and all school districts face. We allocated just sixteen hundred dollars to the ABLR reserves and this is the Employee Benefit accrued liability reserve. It's a, it's a figure that's derived from a compensated absence balance. And then in accordance with Education Law and General Municipal Law, we allocated the interest that was earned by those reserve funds back to the reserve funds for year-end, one hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. And then we continue to carry the appropriated fund balance into the twenty-twenty-one year. That's the amount designated to reduce taxes that we'll discuss in the next slide. And then we're also carrying the four percent unassigned fund balance. So that four-point-one million dollar figure is four percent of next year's of the current year that we're in, a hundred and two million dollar budget, which brings us to an available fund balance of zero dollars. So the authorization that was established by the board back in June actually had an additional half million dollars or so of authorizations, but when all of the expenses came to be, we didn't need anything additional. So seems like we're all set on authorizations for year-end, but more to come with the audit committee and the Board of Education once the audit is actually finalized. So that brings us into the twenty-twenty-twenty-one tax levy and rate-setting portion of the agenda. So the tax rates are indirectly in the schools' control, but it's kind of outside of our immediate local system control. So as you recall, back in February, back in, yeah, March, the school district submits their tax cap calculation, the local levy limit to the state comptroller's office, the Department of Tax and Finance, to show what our actual levy cap is. Our levy was a two-point-six-six percent increase. And then from there, the rates are derived from factors that are somewhat outside of our control, primarily the component town assessments. We have six different towns within the Penfield Central School District, and then the state equalization rates. As a reminder, those equalization rates are what the state uses to balance what they see as the difference between what the assessed value is and what the market value is. So you can see that Penfield's equalization rate for the upcoming year is eighty-seven percent. That more or less indicates that there's a belief at state level that assessments are thirteen percent under what market values are showing. This has kind of been a trend across all of our six towns as we've seen home value prices going up and that hasn't stopped in the pandemic the last couple of years. Penfield the last couple of years has gone from ninety-five percent to ninety percent to eighty-seven percent. Perrington has been at a hundred the last two years and is down to ninety-three this year. Pittsburgh has been at a hundred the prior two years and they're now down to ninety-five. Brighton has been at a hundred the last three years. They're the only district this year that maintained that level of assessment. Massedon has gone from ninety-eight to ninety-six to eighty-eight and Walworth has gone from ninety-eight to ninety-two to eighty-six. So what this does is has an artificial inflation on the tax rate. So you can see at the very bottom, the true value tax rate for the district, if everything was at a hundred percent equalization, is actually decreasing a true value blended rate of twenty-three-point-seven-five per one thousand dollars of assessed value on your homes. So a one-point-three percent decrease. But when you look at what the actual rates are for next year that we're setting this evening, you can see that Penfield, for instance, is at twenty-seven dollars and thirty cents. That's an increase of fifty-six cents per a thousand dollars of assessed value or two-point-oh-nine percent. The localities, the towns that had those more drastic equalization rate swings were Perrington, Massedon and Walworth. And you see that's really why their percentage year to year has increased so much. By and large, Penfield and Brighton make up about ninety-three percent of our school district in terms of assessed value. So most of our homeowners are seeing, in the case of Brighton, a decrease in their tax rate or in the case of Penfield, two-point-oh-nine percent, which is less than our tax levy increase of two-point-six-six percent. And then in the final two columns, you can see what was budgeted back in the spring when we had our first initial understanding what assessments might be and first initial understanding what equalization rates might be. And you can see that we were very accurate within a tenth of a percent in all six of our towns. So those are the rates. The actual tax collection process continues per usual. So September first to October first is the first thirty days of collection. That's the penalty-free period. And then through October thirty-first, there's a two percent fine associated for being late. So any questions regarding where we stand with the tax levy this year, where we stand with year-end fund balance or how the rates are derived and stuff by the board?
Board, any questions? Okay, actually, I do have a question, really kind of related to the buses. Do, you know, the bus transportation, aside from salaries and benefits, is probably one of the next highest budget items. With, with this, do you have a sense of how going to the hybrid A and B will impact the, you know, the bus routes and the mileage and all those kinds of things?
So most of the, so drivers will be driving at least four days a week. So we have the kids in school four days a week for everybody. And then even on the virtual learning day on Wednesday, we are going to have buses running. So we have some of our kids that'll be onsite, but we're also going to be transporting for our private, appropriate schools. We have some BOCs runs that we're going to need to complete. And then even on that Wednesday, we think there's going to be some activity around cleansing of the buses, maintenance, things like that. There will be some savings potentially with the extra runs, the after-school runs, the interscholastic runs, the field trip runs. Some of those things are limited right now, a little bit out of our hands. We'd be ready to fulfill those obligations if and when they become available. Could be a reduction in cost associated with those.
Great. Thanks, Dan.
Next?
Oh, Jim?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. How are we today?
Thank you.
Just a quick update for the board and the public regarding a review of our leadership summit, maybe quotes on that this year. This year, as, as we've seen on several things already, our leadership summit was a little bit different. Typically in years past, summit focuses on some of our initiatives in the district, things that we want to work on. Tom and I kind of set the scene and the tone for the start of the school year. We often do a day's worth, at least the professional development, and then bring in all of our building leadership teams, our administrators and teacher leaders as well to begin the school action planning process. But this year, our time was consumed a little bit differently. We did have all of our administrators in, about thirty of us together on July twenty-first. And then we did bring in some teacher representatives and the leaders of our various bargaining units because the focus of our work over the course of those two days was the development of our reopening plans. Just about a week or ten days before that, we received a guidance from the New York State Department of Health and the governor's office. And then late the week before that, we received the guidance from the New York State Education Department. And so the entire focus of our time was devoted to looking at that guidance and ensuring that we were developing plans that were in accordance with that guidance. So all told, between those two days, we had just over four-hundred-and-eighty hours of, of our time, of our staff's time devoted to that reopening process. So, and that was just starting to scratch the surface. That work has continued. So we made great progress. We believe that we developed plans that are addressing the items of the guidance and beyond. We look forward to continuing revising those plans and refining them as we approach the start of the school year so that we're ready for the model that we'll be implementing, the hybrid model, and, and be able to shift agilely to whatever model we, we have to or are able to as the year progresses. Happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Board, any, any questions for Jim? Great. Thank you. I know we always enjoy, you know, visiting during the opening of the conference and this year we just weren't able to. So we missed it and we look forward to being back next year.
We appreciate the continued support. Thank you.
All right. So we'll turn to reopening of schools update, talking about fall twenty-twenty right around the corner. And just want to talk through a little bit around our important dates. So for reopening, the few dates, just as a reminder, is plans were due to the New York State Department of Health and New York State Department of Education, two separate ways we had to submit our plans. Those were due July thirty-first. Penfield submitted on July thirtieth. It might have been actually, I believe, midnight July thirty-first. I submitted right after graduation. And all reopening plans and related documents are posted on our website. And so you can go to penfield.edu and go to the dropdown link under news and info for coronavirus COVID-nineteen and you can see everything up there that we submitted. I will just take a moment, just so this board knows, because you guys work so closely with other boards in Monroe County, is that one of our local districts was part of a press release that came out of Albany saying that they did not share, they did not submit their plan. And it was just interesting because I know of, of our local school district and two others that absolutely did submit their plan and had to email back saying, "Thank you for submitting your plan." And so it's just one of those opportunities to remind folks, when you watch things, always, always check with the source. So if you ever hear something on Facebook or social media or, or even the local news, feel free to check in with us here in Penfield to, to always make sure that information is correct. We did not get named because we did submit and, and have that email that says we did. Then we went into a waiting pattern. In an August seventh, last Friday, Governor Cuomo announced a green light for schools to open, but the caveat is really clear that we have to remind everybody, including ourselves, that as long as all required mandated guidance is followed. And as Jim mentioned, there's a lot of it and the guidance keeps coming. So little changes here and there keep coming. Things do feel like they're moving a mile a minute and every time any of us think we've mastered it all, some change in guidance comes. But I'm a believer that all the guidance ultimately is to make sure that students, staff and families are safe. And so whatever the guidance is, we will meet it and we will open safely come September. So to really share information with our community, our, an email went out today, yesterday and then today, really announcing three upcoming virtual community meetings. And those are going to be this week, August thirteenth, two of them from three to five PM and again from seven to nine PM. And then next Thursday, August twentieth, from four to six PM. And, and those will be virtual simply because we want to make sure as many people who can log in or attend can. And tomorrow, I will be sharing links with the community again so they know how to log in to watch the presentation. I'm collecting from that, I created a form and we're collecting questions so that can help guide us in our presentation. And then people will be able to ask questions through a form that I'll have, be able to look at. Our team will be able to look at and answer questions live as well. Those will be recorded and be able to put up on our website for anybody who can't attend any of those. They'll, they'll be basically the beginning, just so you know, they'll be the same type of information. If there's any new questions, we will address those at the end, but the beginning of each meeting will be very similar because I want to make sure that, that we made three times to make sure that we could, the best we could, make sure that we can have everybody find a time to attend one of those. So the options for reopening, which, which are in our plans and we continue to build upon, is that we have two options for students. Option one is a hybrid learning model and option two is a remote learning model, which is a hundred percent virtual. The governor and the state talked about three options we have to create that is accurate, but the third option of opening fully five days a week is not possible for our district due to the required six-foot distancing. So just to address this, and we will during our community meetings too, is there are some districts around us that are able to bring back K-five every day and then six through twelve would be hybrid. Penfield does not have that luxury for a number of reasons that this board really understands, which is we don't have room in the inn, which is why we're building twelve new classrooms and that project was in the works for many, many years and then voted on and approved. And they, those classrooms are, are coming along great, but they're not going to be ready for September. They'll be ready for hopefully next September. And so I use this math the best I can to try to help explain to people. So at our K-five schools, the average class size across K-five is about twenty-four students. Our typical classroom at K-five holds twelve students when their desks are six feet apart. And that's six feet on each side, six feet in front of you, six feet behind you. And, and so it's not just next to you or, or front. So it's a bubble of six feet all around you. So in order to open K-five every single day, we would have to double our classroom space. And so many districts around us do have extra classrooms because they're not growing at the rate Penfield has been growing, which we've talked about at these board meetings many, many times and looking at our, our rate of new families moving in. And so our, our computer labs at most of our elementary schools have already become classrooms years ago. Many of- Many of our areas where teachers were doing small instruction, small construction, they've been reconverted into classrooms many years ago. So we're really tight for space, which is why we're building twelve new classrooms. And it's why we do not have enough room to find a way to break up classrooms and have everybody come back K five. So like some other districts near us, we will be hybrid. We have to be hybrid K twelve. But there is this, the other option of families who want to select the remote learning a hundred percent. So just a little bit of information on both of these models is option one is that a hybrid learning model. And we talked a little bit about this during earlier presentations this evening. Typically, students will attend two days in person and three days virtually. So we have two cohorts. Cohort A will attend Monday and Tuesday. Cohort B will attend Thursday and Friday. And then social emotional learning, academic check-ins, office hours will take place on Wednesdays across the district. However, on Wednesdays, it's not just a check-in. We're also going to be providing students with asynchronous instruction, assignments that they can do online, videos to watch from the teachers, and work being assigned. So that will be a full day for kids. The hybrid learning model looks a little different at each level, elementary, middle school, and high school. Specifically, this is why. At the elementary level, we have classroom teachers and we have instructional specialists, including enrichment teachers, reading literacy teachers, math specialists for R T I. So K five is able to offer a more synchronous hybrid. So students will be in school for two days with their classroom teachers learning, and then two days with other teachers, those specialists, who will be continuing the core instruction with students via Zoom and Teams in a much more synchronous manner. At the K five level, we obviously know we have families who the students may not be able to log in, because they are at a daycare, they're staying with a grandparent, they're staying in a, at a friend's house, because parents have to work. So anything we do synchronously online, we will be, we're working on a plan to record that so students can access it and watch it at a later time. I will tell you though, as a parent and good friend of parents who have very young kids, first and second grade, they really can log on to a Zoom all by themselves and learn all by themselves. Not every student. But I also want to talk about that, please, you know, just because the student's home and the parents are trying to work at home, or the student's maybe at a relative's house during that day. If we, if we teach them, which we will be able to do in the hybrid, those first few days back to school, I am not giving a fault that even some of our youngest kids will be able to log on and connect. But those who can't, we'll make sure that there's an asynchronous way that parents can connect with that information later in the day or at a later date online. Middle school and high school, we don't have that extra staff. So when they're in school for two days, they will be following their regular schedule, meeting with their teachers, learning. And then on the two other days, I don't have other staff that can zoom in with them live. So that work will be asynchronous. So it will be lessons that are put up on Teams and that will show teachers perhaps teaching the lesson, working through it, and giving students activities in time that is all moving forward. Not just review work from the two days you saw them, but new content moving forward. And that's what it will look like more at the middle school and high school level. Detailed flyers and more information can be found on our website. That was sent out Monday. And so I appreciate and encourage people to go and read those and look at, ask questions that we can share out at our community meetings or email your building principal if you have specific building level questions. The remote learning model, which is one hundred percent virtual, I just want to share is that these students will not attend a physical classroom. They won't be on our campus in classrooms. They will be learning from home the entire time. So all learning is going to take place via Teams. Microsoft Office Teams is our instructional platform that we are using, although we will be allowing teachers to use Zoom as well, because many of them got used to it in the spring. So it'll be Microsoft Teams or Zoom for the video conferencing. We plan to offer social emotional, academic check-ins, office hours on Wednesdays. So we'll still be able to offer that support like we would during a more traditional hybrid. Instruction for our hundred percent remote kids is going to have to be synchronous and asynchronous. So they may be able to log in and talk with teachers and get the learning. And then on other days, it's going to be videos of the instructional specialists and teachers teaching and students completing that work. The remote learning model is going to look different at every level. The detailed flyers about these are on our website. I do want to just hit upon a rumor that was out there, which I probably started, that the remote option is going to be taught by Penfield Central School District teachers. So there was some talk about BOSI's building a program that we could buy into. And at the end of the day, we decided that we want Penfield teachers teaching our students either hybrid or virtual. But I also want to share, and we'll talk about this at our community meetings, is when I say it's a Penfield Central School District teacher, I'm not saying it's somebody, I can't guarantee it'll be somebody from your home elementary school. So right now, based on the survey out where we're asking people to select option one or option two for the first semester of school, we're at about ten percent virtual, which is where we were three weeks ago when we just did a dipstick to see where people were. It's about ten percent. And so that's not enough students for us to just break down our elementary schools and have one grade level teacher at all four elementary schools teaching only virtual kids. It's a handful of kids in each grade level across four schools. So I will just stand here as a superintendent, and I know the board, because board members, you sent your children to all four of our elementary schools when we talk about it as a combined. We can all argue which one is the best. And the best elementary school happens to be the one you send your kids to in Penfield. That's how this works. But we have four incredible elementary schools with all incredible staff that have been hired and worked and trained and have done the same P D and worked through the same curriculum and standards across the district. It might just not be somebody you recognize, because they're not at your home school. But I, so I want to be fair, is that when you pick the virtual model, what I am going to guarantee, and we will work to make sure that this guarantee is true, is that every student in the virtual model will get the same curriculum based on the same standards in making sure that they're working with teachers to get to the same place as our hybrid students. But it is going to look different. And that is sort of sometimes the elephant in the room, because many times what parents want at the K five level, and I understand it, is they want it to look exactly the same in the virtual model than it would in the hybrid model. They want to see the same students, they want to see the same teachers. And while we're still finalizing what the virtual will look like, I think it's fair for me to be honest and transparent to say, if you're picking virtual, you have to realize that it will be Penfield teachers, but it might not be the typical third grade teacher at your school that you're expecting to see on Zoom. And that's a reality that we have to face as we look through and build this program. And what I share with everybody in the board here is, please remember that our number one option is the hybrid. We want people back in school. But the governor has said we need to also provide a virtual. And we're going to do that, and we're going to do that well. But it won't look, the virtual model is not going to look just like the hybrid model, except you're at home. So it might be different teachers than you're used to, but they will be Penfield Central School District elementary teachers. At the middle school and high school, it's a little bit easier to build that in, because based on how many students go virtual, teachers, I will use high school as an example, teachers typically teach five sections. So based on how many kids go virtual in ninth grade, it's very possible that a ninth grade history teacher might have four sections of hybrid learning and one section of virtual learning. And so it might be, it might be a little bit easier to see that at the virtual level at the middle school and high school. But that being said, at the high school level especially, and this is in our documentation, we cannot guarantee that every student who picks virtual is going to be able to have the same elective choices that a hybrid student would. One of the great things about Penfield High School that I'm so proud of is if you look at our course description guide, which this board reviews every year, it looks like a college course description guide. It's approximately ninety pages and it has some amazing electives. However, if we're going to teach a hundred percent virtual, it's fair to say your core courses, your graduation requirements, we will be able to teach virtually. But I can't promise that we're going to be able to teach every elective virtually. For example, we have a technology elective about building houses. That is not going to be offered online. We have a amazing art elective about ceramics. That cannot be taught online. And so we will, just want to be fair, it's in there, is that if high school students pick a hundred percent virtual, we will work to get as much as we can. But our goal, just like the districts all around us, the goal is going to be the core courses that we want to make sure students are on track. And we will fight and do the best we can to offer some other courses. But if two students want to take ceramics virtually, that's pretty difficult to pull a teacher and say, "You're going to teach two kids." We're going to work through that. But in both of these options, the other thing we hear a lot is, simply just let kids zoom into the classroom. Open up the laptop, put it on Zoom, and the kids can hear it. And there's part of me that wants to say to the board, "Let's just do that, because it sounds really good." However, we've tried this all summer with adults taking professional development, where half of them were in school and half of them were on Zoom, and it doesn't work well. Our classrooms are not built like multi-billion dollar organizations that have business meetings with people all over the world. They're classrooms. So the sound quality isn't as good, the microphones don't pick up everything. The one teacher with twelve kids on Zoom and twelve kids in the classroom is going to have a very difficult job trying to engage both types of kids. And so that is an option that sounds really good, but the technology and the, and the infrastructure in our district does not allow for that. And that's why we're doing synchronous in-person for two days and asynchronous for two days at the middle school and high school level. So those are a couple rumors and things I know are important. We'll talk about those more at the community meetings. And then I wanted to share about the reopening survey I referenced. That went out yesterday. The due date for the survey is this Sunday, August sixteenth. We've got about sixteen hundred responses now. We have about forty-five hundred students in our district. And so we're about a third of the way there. The survey, a survey is going to be, need to be completed for each child in your house. So if you have four children, you've got to complete the survey four times for each child. The learning model selected, hybrid or remote, will be for the first semester of school. One of the questions we get a lot is, "Well, if I start with hybrid, but I don't like it, can I move to virtual?" Or "If I start at virtual and I don't like it, can I move to hybrid?" And just like all the districts around us, I have to say, what you select this week is going to be selected for the first semester of school, which ends January twenty ninth. Because we're Penfield, I will say, you can work through and see if a change can be made, but I can't guarantee it, because it has staffing and social distancing implications I can't necessarily always say yes to. So if your child wants to come from virtual to hybrid, and that puts us at thirteen students in a classroom, we no longer meet the social distancing mandates, and I'm going to have to say no. If you want to go from hybrid to virtual, and all of a sudden that throws off and a teacher has more students than they're able to engage with successfully, then we're going to have to say no. But we will look, we will try, but I think it's fair to say, whatever you select this week is you're selecting it for the first semester of school. We'll see how things go. We will make changes as needed, and students will have an opportunity to select if they want to stay in remote or shift to hybrid come second semester. And just to be fair, students without a survey, and we put this in there, they will be scheduled for hybrid. So if a student, for some reason, their parent forgets to fill out the survey or we miss somebody, somehow, we will schedule them for hybrid unless we hear different. Some information on masking and temperature checks. This is all I talk about now at my house, because I'm married to the best nurse in the world. So we talk lots about temperature and masking. Masks will be required for all students and staff. We will have short mask breaks built into the classroom schedule. This question comes up a lot. Be very honest with this board. Our community expressed their concern when our original plan was that masks in the classroom would not be required. And when we changed it based on information from the county department of health, people were concerned that masks have to be worn all the time. So it's about a fifty-fifty split. And so when there's splits like that, we're going to rely on the science of the Monroe County Department of Health, and who knows a lot more about masking and this illness than I do. And their, their strong recommendation is that students and staff wear masks throughout the day. There are going to be parents and guardians who are going to be required to complete, I'm sorry, I take a step back. The mask, we will have breaks, we'll find a way to give kids breaks for masks, but that is a requirement in our plan. The other part required in all the plans is that we do temperature checks. But the state department of health and the Monroe County Department of Health says very clearly that we need parent partnership in this. Tempting to take a temperature of four thousand students as they enter the building is not a reasonable request. We will be taking temperatures and kids standing outside for a long time to make that happen. That is fine maybe in September. That doesn't look great in November and December, the days that it's raining. And so we really need parents to help us. And we're working and finalizing an app through Frontline that we use for our staff already. And parents will be required to complete a virtual questionnaire to attest to the COVID wellness questions and a temperature check every morning before the children go to school. If a student arrives to school, we have, we will have the ability to check which students have not completed that or which parents haven't completed it for their children. And if a student doesn't have that questionnaire completed, then the school will have to check the temperature during the day, which will require us to call students out of the classroom, which takes them away from instruction. And when we only have two days of teacher-student contact in teaching in a in-person piece, I don't want students pulled out of the classroom for any reason. So we'll continue to, when this app is finalized, we'll share it with parents, we'll explain the expectation. And ultimately, parents working with us to fill out that questionnaire is going to be very, very helpful. If your child happens to go to daycare or plays a club sport that's not connected to the school, you're probably used to these apps already, because parents are already filling them out for their students. COVID nineteen symptoms at school is always a hot button topic. So just sharing with the board, and we'll share with the community as well in our community meetings. When an individual exhibits symptoms consistent with COVID nineteen during a screening, that individual must immediately be separated from others and sent home. The individual cannot return to school without, at minimum, documentation from a healthcare provider, a negative COVID nineteen test, or symptom resolution. And so this will be a shift, but if an individual receives a positive COVID nineteen diagnosis, the individual must wait to be released from isolation before returning. Both of these will be us working hand in hand with the department of health. So when somebody tests positive for COVID, or when there's symptoms and we're sending somebody home, we will be speaking with the department of health to get guidance on each case on what that looks like. So the department of health is committed to notifying superintendents and school nurses of all mandatory quarantines for students, staff, and faculty after notifying the individual or the family. So after the family has been notified that their child has, has been tested positive for COVID and is being required by the department of health to quarantine at home, then I get a phone call. And the Monroe County Department of Health has my number, so they, I'm a twenty-four hour access. Our school nurses will be during the day. Anything that happens in the evening, after-school hours, or through the night, they will be reaching out to the building principal or, and/or me. The department of health will take the lead once a confirmed case of COVID is found, and the district will work with the department of health and follow all recommended guidance. So what everybody wants to know, including me, is exactly what will happen if a student or staff member tests positive for COVID? And the answer is, the department of health will work closely with us to guide what we need to do. So most likely, the class and that teacher may have to quarantine, but it really depends on contact tracing and what the department of health recommends. And we will follow the department of health recommendation. Some additional questions and information is just a reminder that the district is maintaining a frequently asked question document on our website, along with additional information, including all of the guidance we've received from the state and county. If everybody wants to go and look at that, please do. Please review this information regularly, stay up to date with all the new guidance and information. And just to let you know how to get there, you just go to our webpage, penfield.edu, click on the top, the news and info tab, and then in that dropdown menu, pick coronavirus COVID nineteen information. And there's reopening plans, and there is all of the emails that have been sent from me to be... And there's reopening plans and there is all of the emails that have been sent from me to the entire community. So if you miss an email, you can always go back and read through those. You're having trouble going to sleep at night? It's a great place to go if you're tired of counting sheep. But it's lots of information and we're going to be as transparent as possible and keep people up to date along with the longings that happen. That is my COVID-19 update. Are there any questions?
All right, board, this is the topic of the year. So any questions for Tom on this?
I just said one.
All right, good. Bill, go ahead.
Sorry. I'll just so, just to clarify. So a child diagnosed with COVID or with, does not necessarily mean the school shuts down and we go into some sort of lockdown.
Correct. So right now, our understanding work with the Monroe County Department of Health is that if a student or any staff member does test positive for COVID, it does not mean school shuts down. Because we've moved in New York State to contact tracing, the Department of Health would work through their process and determine what is the reasonable action to a positive test. So what could happen is that if a student tests positive or a classroom teacher tests positive and those students and teacher were together for a whole day without knowing it, it is very possible that that classroom might be quarantined. So the teacher would need to go home for two weeks and the students would need to go home for two weeks. We will work on and have a plan on how we can continue their education virtually because they're not ill, they're quarantined because somebody in the classroom is ill. And even that student or teacher who may test positive may be asymptomatic and feel okay to still work with our students or work with the teacher in a virtual landscape. So that is a great question that people have heard is that once we get one positive test of COVID, are we going to shut down? The answer is no, unless the Department of Health says that's what we're doing. I think just as a follow-up to that, Mr. Yeager, I think I just want to share is that please remember, and this is tough in this age, is that just like any other illness or situation that students might have, like head lice, we can't share the name of who that is, whether it's a staff member or a student. And I know that what's going to happen, I do live in the real world. Social media is there and everybody will ask. But you know, we will follow HIPAA laws and release what the Department of Health allows us to release. But if there's a positive test in a classroom, that classroom will know that they're being quarantined by the Department of Health. It's just, these practices are already in place for whooping cough, for tussus, for strep throat that goes around our elementary schools. If you're a parent and you sent your kid to an elementary school, anywhere in New York State, you've gotten a letter saying somebody in the class tested positive for pertussis or strep throat or head lice, which I can't say aloud because then I need to itch. But those are all things that we have a process in place. COVID will be no different. But we never share who the student is that tested positive.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam.
Catherine, did I show your hand up?
Yes, you did. Tom, have you heard from Monroe County in your discussions with the Health Department? Why it would be necessary to quarantine a classroom if six-foot distancing is being practiced with masking? It doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me if those are the protocols and guidelines which are being followed diligently. What would be the reason why you would have to quarantine all these people? Wouldn't all the protections already be in place?
That's a great question. And so I also want to clarify to make sure I was clear is that we will not, the school district is not going to be making the decision to quarantine. It will be the Department of Health. So the reason why the Department of Health might decide to quarantine a classroom because one student or staff member in that room tested positive is because it's a public school and they may decide to put, really to be extra cautious. So right now, if you've been involved at all with contact tracing, and I haven't, but I happen to be married to an amazing nurse who volunteered her time at the Department of Health, the contact tracing really works where if we were all together in a real room right now and one of us tested positive, the question that the Department of Health would ask is, how far apart were you? If you said six feet, were you wearing masks? If you said yes, they'd want to know how long and what type of interaction you had. And if we were all as adults in a meeting, six feet apart and wearing masks, they might not quarantine us. They might say, monitor your symptoms, go get checked to make sure, but we're not going to put in an official Department of Health quarantine. But with schools, I think the feeling is this is new. We've got a lot of families very concerned. We have staff concerned and it's possible they may err on the side of caution and quarantine. But I agree with you, Catherine, that it feels like it's a little bit of maybe an overreaction. Because typically with contact tracing, it really means, were you unmasked in less than six feet for 10 to 15 minutes? So it's not just walking by each other in the hallway, but it's really that, that long, that long-term interaction with somebody or longer term. So just to be fair, Dr. Putnam is not quarantining people for two weeks, but we will follow the guidance of the Department of Health. And if they are going to be over cautious, I'm not going to say no. If they recommend a quarantine, that's what we're going to do.
Well, I understand the dilemma that puts you in. But then what does that do to the families of those students who are quarantining? Do those families have to go into quarantine as well?
Well, that depends. So that's a great question to talk about it. So if a student in the classroom does not have COVID, but they were quarantined because somebody did, when that student goes home who doesn't have COVID, their family isn't quarantining. It's only the people who had interaction with the person with a positive test.
Okay.
Does that help? So that's really important to know. Unless the Department of Health tells us otherwise, our understanding of all the guidance is you are only quarantining if you yourself interacted with the positive person.
Okay.
So if it's the teacher and the student, it's not then every student that person, every student that, every person that every student walked by in the hallway. It would just be the interactions with the one individual that tested positive.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Board members, any additional questions? Just make sure I'm never seeing any hands. I have a couple of questions, Tom. I'd start with the one, the most recent one. You know, you mentioned the Board of Health, I mean, the County Department of Health as really them being the people who make the decisions, people who have the, you know, the protocols for how they're going to approach. Is there a way for the, for our community members to get information from the Board of Health? Have they posted how they're going to approach things? Because they're looking to you and you're saying, and understandably, they're saying it's, this is not our expertise. It's them. Is there a place we can direct them to so they can get firsthand information on what would happen and how the Department of Health would approach it when we, if we have a situation?
Yeah, so there is information on the Monroe County Department of Health website. What we are all asking for, both as superintendents and as parents and educators, is a really clear decision tree on what happens if a student has COVID, what exactly will happen along that path? And we don't have something like that yet. But there is a Finger Lakes School Reopening Committee that a number of people sit on across the Finger Lakes area, including Dr. Mendoza, Bob Duffy, those folks who have been working through this. And we're hoping that something will come out like that, like a decision tree to really help. But because COVID is, is not always, is not always perfect, that therefore every situation is a little bit different. So they can't always say this will always result in a quarantine of the class. But that is what, I'm being very honest with you, that is what we are asking for. But we also have our district physician, Dr. Two, an amazing nurse coordinator in our district, Kathy Harris, and our other nurses in our district who are all top-notch. And so between now and the opening of the school, we will have something more specific tied to exactly what that process is. But I would direct people who want information directly from the Department of Health, they're posting all of their recommendations and press releases on the Monroe County Department of Health website.
Thank you. The, the other thing goes, and I'm going kind of backwards to your presentation. You talked about the questionnaires for the students. First off, the assumption is a parent, if a parent has, just like you did for the survey, if a parent has two or three students, they have to do, do they have to do two or three questionnaires on the app? One for each student or is there a way they can just say everybody's good?
Well, right now, we're working with Frontline. I think I want to under-promise and over-deliver. So right now, we believe they're going to have to fill out that app for each child in their house. So, but I understand what you're saying is it would be really great if it was just one app and you could knock it out for all your students. But I do believe it's going to be a one for each student.
So, you know, certainly that's, that's, parents have to do that every day for each student. You know, it gets tedious, people get, I don't say complacent, but it just gets kind of rote.
Mark, I'm going to share with you, as always, try to be transparent. We actually looked and worked pretty hard in this county to create an attestation form that parents could sign before the first day of school saying, I agree not to send my child if my answer to any of these questions is no or they have a temperature higher than 104, 100.4, which is the number we have to use. That, that actually, the Monroe County Department of Health was interested. At the end of the day, at the state level, we don't believe that's going to fit our guidance. And so we go back to having to do it every single day. I agree, it is tedious. If we have to do it for each student, people are going to get complacent and forget about it. One of the concerns we hear, and I understand why we hear it, is well, parents might lie and say there's no fever when there is a fever. And I just want to address it here on the board because, well, I think that happens now anyway. I think parents many times will give their child Motrin and send them off to school to be tough and get through. And we can't have that anymore. And Motrin's going to wear off and we're going to find out they have a fever. And now we're going back to having to go home potentially for two weeks because you had those symptoms in school. This is going to be a very bumpy road. This is not going to be clean cut. And it really, more than ever, I think, is going to tax what we talk about in our community in our board meetings of the partnership between home and school. We need parents and guardians more than ever to help us with this and know that none of us at the school level want this. We want to return to school five days a week. We want COVID to not be something we have to talk about. But this is the world we are now living in. And I'm one to say this district is going to embrace it and we're going to come out stronger because of it. But I agree. So I think it's that one piece though, as a parent to say, hey, I finally have a perk before having an only child. I only have to fill out that attestation app once. But we are going to have to fill it out for each child, I believe.
All right, thank you. That's, that was just my questions.
I am sure that the board and our community will have further questions. We will answer as many as we can through our community meetings and continue responding to emails that come forward and make sure that we, we are getting people answers. And when we don't have an answer, which does come up, we will be honest about that, that we are waiting or looking into specific answers. Because some situations are very specific and we don't always have an exact answer for them. All right, so that, that actually concludes superintendent reports for the evening.
Great, thank you, Tom. So board members, we are, I just lost my people here.
Oh, I apologize, Mark, I just stopped sharing the screen.
Oh, I think it's, oh, yeah, it changed the way of my, that's fine. All right, we are on section 6A, which is the lunch fund budget. So the, we have recommended action that the board approved the lunch fund budget for 2020, 2021, as recommended by the Food and Services Department. You have some additional budget information in the package and you've seen the presentation that Joey Arden Gento provided. So may I have a motion and a second for, to approve the budget?
So moved.
All those in favor?
All are in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you, Sharon. Next item is 6B, which is the school lunch price. So the board, the recommendation that the board approve, approval be given to the Food Service Department for prices of school meals as listed for the 2021 school year. And again, Joey presented this. The breakfast, the full price will go raise 10 cents to 160. Lunches for elementary will go 10, increase 10 cents to 290 and same for the secondary. Milk will not change and then the free inducer price will still be no change. So may I have a motion and a second that the approval be given to the Foods Department for the prices of school meals as listed for the 2021 school year?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
All are in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6C, which is establishing the tax rates and funding of reserves. We have a recommended action that the, that the described transfers and adjustments be approved and that the school tax rates for the 2020, 2021 school year be set based upon the real property tax levy of $66,885,407. And you know, the details of that was presented by Dr. Driscoll, Driffl, in the presentation. They have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
All are in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is 6D, which is the Nalgi Nook International Corporation Tax Correction. It is recommended that the Board of Education approves a correctioned bill, tax bill as described. The Resolution Regarding Article VII Tax Societary Matter of Nalgi Nook International Corporation. The Nalgi Nook International Corporation formally challenged a tax assessment for real property located at 7120 Pramaranima Creek Drive for the tax year 2019, 2020. The town of Penfield has agreed to certain reductions in assessment for the tax year 2019 to 2020 only. Justice DeNofrio, the New York State Supreme Court, Monroe County, issued a decision adjudicating these challenges and reduced the assessment for 2019, 2020. A refund will be issued to reflect the reduction in assessment from the Tax Societary Reserve. And the correction is as follows. And you have that information here, which is the original assessment for the 2019, 2020 year was $8,601,400. The proper assessment is $7,130,800, which is a reduction of $1,470,600 at the rate of $26.74, $26.74. So the corrected amount is $39,324.76 with interest of $19,666, I'm sorry, $19,666.24 for a total of $41,291. So hopefully I made that clear and you have that in front of you. May I have a motion and a second to accept that resolution?
So moved.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
All are in favor, none are opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item 7A, which is the District Emergency Response Plan. There's a recommendation, recommended actions that the board approved the District Emergency Response Plan as presented on June 23rd, 2020. Present to the Commissioner's Regulation, Section 155.17E3, the district held the required public hearing for the emergency response plan on June 23rd, 2020. It's been available for public comment for 30 days and must now be adopted by the Board of Education. I have a motion and a second that the emergency response plan be approved as presented on June 23rd, 2020 per the Commissioner's recommendation, Section 155.17E3.
So moved.
So moved, second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
All are in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item 8A. Item 8A, which is the School Calendar Approval. And the Recommended Actions that Board approved, the 2020, 2021 School Calendar as revised. Dr. Putnam, you know, explained that in great detail, and how we're accommodating all the changes that need to be made for the, for COVID. So may I have a motion and a second that the Board approved the 2020, 2021 calendar as revised?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
All are in favor and none opposed, the motion carries.
That is the end of the, of the motions and resolutions, President's Remarks, Section 9, the New York State School Board Association Summer Law Conference. I attended that this summer, it was online, and, and, you know, there's a lot of, of course, the main topic was all around COVID and the impact of COVID. You know, it covered how that affected the, you know, Title IX regulations. It affected, we discussed the impact on special education and our responsibilities, and of course, it was, you know, I think the term was restorative or comprehensive, or, I'll just say restorative, special education for the impact of, you know, being quarantined in a COVID. And then the safety, our safety measure responsibilities. I have a whole slide deck, actually, a variety of slide decks that I want to work with Sharon to make available. We've been discussing different venues for doing this. I think it's going to end up in the board docs, so we can make this available to all the board members to take a look at. The New York State School Board Association Annual Convention and Education Expo, they've, you know, announced that that's going to be online. It was originally scheduled for October 29th and 30th. Now it's going to be a virtual event, and we're going to, you know, spread it out because they can. The registration opens on August 17, and I think the early bird registration prices go to around, around September 16. So since, since there's no travel involved, you know, commitments as far as travel arrangements and hotels, you know, it's a little easier to make a decision later on, you know, at least we have the early bird, we don't have to worry about getting booked out of the hotels. Now, the question is, is it, is it worth it? Because it is still, there is still a price to it, and then it's, it's spread out, so it has an impact, it has a different kind of impact on everyone's personal schedules. So, you know, you can, we can decide how that is, everyone can make their own decision, we can talk about that at a future date. But does anyone have any comments on that?
I, I just have, so you know how I've always, or I volunteered to be, not a presenter, but host?
Mm-hmm.
Are they doing that? Like, would I volunteer to, like, introduce somebody online?
I don't know, I haven't seen any information on that. You know, a lot of that is sort of managing the handout, make sure the room is set up appropriately, and that it's not overcrowded. For example, if it gets filled up to close it out, you know, all that is not, not really applicable. However, it always is nice to have someone introduce it, and if they're spreading it out, NISBA is, you know, they do a lot for us, but they may not want to have to, you know, dedicate their staff to do it for every single one. I haven't seen the request for hosts, but we'll see.
Mark, can I just add that I've been checking their website, and right now, they don't have any of the programming information up. They only have the pre-conference information up, so as soon as they have their actual program with when the dates and the speakers are going to be speaking virtually, having their sessions, I'll let you know. And then you guys will be able to make a better decision whether or not you want to attend and which you want to attend. But right now, it's blank when you look.
Okay.
So they're still working, everybody's working hard.
Well, yeah.
Everywhere, trying to make new programs out of what we're used to, so.
Thanks, Sharon.
Thanks, Sharon. Any other, any other discussion on the convention? Right. And our committee assignments, which you have in there, which was the information we had at the time, we had to give it to Sharon to post. We did have a discussion amongst the board to finalize that. Sharon will provide you with the final assignments after this meeting, so we have it all final. And new business, so is there any new business from the Board?
No.
So I would just like to say, before we adjourn, I'd like to speak for the Board to hope that this will be our last virtual Zoom meeting. You know, from the Board perspective, we really enjoy it much more when we're together and we're working together. It's, you know, we do work well together, and we also enjoy it when we're in the library and we have people come and visit us and participate in the board meetings. We've wanted to do that, however, when we were trying to do the live feeds, and then the library is great for our normal usage, but it would not have met the needs for social distancing, should we have, you know, a large attendance or really much of any attendance at all. We just felt that we didn't really have the time to get an appropriate setup for social distancing and us being together and having a live feed. So we took advantage of this, the ability to do this hopefully one more time. We look forward to being back at one of the, somewhere in the high school, and we look forward to having, you know, the community visit us, and we enjoy seeing you and talking to you. So again, a lot of people ask why we didn't do that. So with that, over here, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:40 PM?
So moved.
Thank you. Any, any question or discussion? All those in favor?
Everyone's in favor and none opposed, the motion carries, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, motion, meeting adjourned.